I'd like to call to order the December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting of the Village Board. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Takaoaka.
Here.
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
President Byrne and Trustee Forster gave prior notice that they would not be in attendance.
Is there a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem for this evening's meeting?
I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second it.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have, uh, we've been called to order now, so would everyone please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board on something that's not on our agenda? Okay.
Are they on the agenda? Wear red or no?
Okay. All right, then, in that case, um, under the president's report, I have a couple of proclamations. First one is for Edward J. Mankey, Jr., um, a proclamation in recognition of service. Edward Mankey began his career as a telecommunicator with Norcom Public Safety Communications in nineteen eighty-nine and served in that capacity until nineteen ninety-five. Edward then became a telecommunicator with the Vernon Hills Police Department before being appointed its telecommunications supervisor in two thousand and five. Edward was instrumental in the building of a modern consolidated public safety dispatch center. After the acquisition of a new building on the police department campus, Edward served as the facility coordinator and advised on the design and equipment requirements necessary to create a state-of-the-art public safety answering point for the village. Edward cultivated multiple partnerships with outside stakeholders. The relationships formed through these efforts led to the establishment of a joint police-fire operation between the Village of Vernon Hills and Countryside Fire Protection District. Under Edward's leadership, the center eventually grew to serve the villages of Libertyville and Lincolnshire. Edward implemented enhanced training and quality control mechanisms critical to improving the service delivery capabilities of the communication center. These processes led to a more efficient emergency telephone system, more effective service for officers and firefighters deployed in the field, and an eventual perfect rating for emergency communications as evaluated by the insurance services office. Edward perpetuated a sense of noble purpose and family for the staff of the communication center. Personnel assigned under Edward's leadership grew personally and professionally, resulting in their exceptional service to the village and its partners. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the president and the board of trustees of the Village of Vernon Hills, on behalf of the entire Vernon Hills community, County of Lake, extend to Edward J. Mankey, Jr., their gratitude and thanks for his years of service to the village, passed and approved this thirteenth day of December, two thousand twenty-two. Um, Chief, do you want to say anything about this? Because having had a, having had a family member who was a dispatcher for many years, it is a, an amazing job.
Yeah, they are truly the unsung heroes of the public safety world. Um, they're our partners. We could not possibly, um, serve the community without, uh, with their partnership. Uh, it is not only, um, them receiving the calls and sending us, but behind the scenes, they are supporting, uh, the roles of police officers and firefighters as we are out there, sometimes for hours, they're providing invaluable assistance. Uh, Ed himself just demonstrated tremendous, uh, leadership and professionalism in his service and, and leading, um, a very dynamic group of people that really face just, they just never know what's going to happen when they pick up that phone and they have to be, uh, they, they have to be coached and, and Ed did a great job of that. So, we're going to miss him, but, um, uh, his, his wife, as you know, uh, retired a couple of years ago and, um, uh, I think, um, I, I think she has insisted. I've, I've worked to try and keep Ed on a little, little longer. We're at a pretty critical time in our transformation in, uh, uh, county communication system, but, uh, it's time for Ed to go and we wish him, uh, the very best of luck.
So, uh, Public Works would like to also thank Ed Mankey for all the service he's provided to Public Works. Uh, per what the chief is saying, Public Works Department could not operate without the help of telecommunicators, Ed Mankey's leadership. When we're, uh, sleeping and we're not sure how the weather conditions are, Ed Mankey and the telecommunicators call us in. We know how to snowplow and take care of things. So, we just appreciate Ed and all this help to our department.
Yeah, it is such a, a critical job that no one actually ever gets to see much of and, and, uh, and they do an amazing, amazing job. Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay. Our second, excuse me, our second proclamation is for, uh, Kandarp Vadia in recognition of efforts to mentor and tutor students in the field of mathematics in Vernon Hills. Um, Kandarp Vadia is a resident of Vernon Hills. Um, yeah, why don't you, yeah, come on up. In fact, bring the whole family up. Sure, come on up. You can get right up here. Kandarp Vadia is a resident of Vernon Hills, a junior at Vernon Hills High School, and a member of the competitive math team. Kandarp has a passion for learning math and teaching and has focused his attention toward tutoring younger students in advanced mathematics to prepare them for competitions and extracurricular teams. Kandarp created an online tutoring service and a nonprofit program called Project Curiosity, intended for fourth through eighth graders. Kandarp donates the proceeds from Project Curiosity to UNICEF, the United Nations International Children's Emergency Fund, to help further educate children globally. Kandarp also helps tutor students, peers during the school year at Vernon Hills High School and desires to pass along tips and tricks as well as an inspiration to be curious about math. Students using Kandarp's tutoring service also utilize it to improve public speaking, preparation for debates, and improvisation. Now therefore be proclaimed that Roger Byrne and the board of trustees do hereby express our sincerest appreciation to Kandarp Vadia for his efforts to inspire young students to be passionate about mathematics and for tutoring students in a variety of subjects, all while donating the proceedings from his nonprofit charitable causes, to, to these different charitable causes. So, uh, dated this thirteenth of December, two thousand twenty-two. Yeah, let me give you this and then you can go ahead and see if you can move it. Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So hello, everyone. Um, Albert Einstein once said, "I have no special talent. I am only passionately curious." Hi, my name is Kandarp Vadia, a junior from Vernon Hills High School and the founder of the nonprofit tutoring program, Project Curiosity. While I can proclaim to have nearly the same level of intellectual prowess as Einstein, I can proudly say that I too, over the course of my journey as a student so far, have come to realize the importance of curiosity. Having it not only builds an internal driving force that students use to keep learning, but the hardworking nature that comes as a result of this trait opens up many doors. Based on this ideology, in the summer of two thousand twenty-one, I decided to create a tutoring program where I could share my academic knowledge while attempting to instill this very trait of curiosity into students. The tutoring program, Project Curiosity, offered subjects such as competitive math, public speaking, and my personal passion of astronomy, in which I have taught students from all over the country over the past two summers in an online format. From the beginning, the idea of Project Curiosity was to give, and so instead of keeping the money charged as fees, I decided to donate all the money collected to global organizations such as UNICEF to help children in need gain an education, as well as our very own Cook Memorial Public Library, to which I'm very grateful for, for always giving me the opportunity to stay connected with books and our local community of Vernon Hills. I was really happy that these efforts were recognized by our Cook Library and also featured in an article by the Chicago Daily Herald newspaper. To wrap it up, I really wanted to say thank you all, especially Mr. Cook, for this recognition, as this will fuel my passion and help me continue my journey. A great thanks to my school, our town of Vernon Hills, and last but not least, to my family for always supporting my ideas. I also wanted to mention, a great inspiration for this was my grandfather in India, who after retirement has spent many years doing community service in the form of similar education. Thank you so much once more for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I say, hello? Can I say something really quick?
Sure.
First of all, you're awesome, okay, and you got a very bright future ahead of you, but I blame your parents for this. So, I usually don't blame parents for things like this, but you're, you know, they've done a great job. Thank you.
Well, and, and I can, I can echo that, that the reason I found out about this was a younger brother who's back there. You want to introduce your brother?
Oh, yes. Um, his name is Parth Vadia. Um, he's, uh, currently a seventh grader at Hawthorne Middle School, South.
We were, we were doing, uh, one of the, uh, programs that they do at, at the middle schools here, and we were talking about community service and, um, Mrs. Shannon Messina, who's one of the, uh, social studies teachers at South, mentioned, uh, the project and everything like that and, and brought it up, and, uh, your brother was, you know, going on about his service and your service and stuff again, and, um, I just couldn't pass up the opportunity to say, this is the kind of, I'm, I'm always, like I said, I'm always getting asked, you know, what are the kids like today in, in education? Here, here it is. It, it, it's, things are good, folks. I mean, we got people like this in our education system. It, it's, you know, there's a lot of good stuff out there. So, thank you so much for everything you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Speaking of education, I was remiss earlier when we did, um, the citizens wishing to address the board, did, uh, you folks wish to say anything or were you just going to observe? Ms. Roach, um, yes, no? Just observing? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Just wanted to make sure. Okay. Especially since we're talking about education at this point, it was like, so, okay. All right, then, um, next is village manager, correct?
Yes, thank you. We have, um, an annual housekeeping item. Um, each year, the village is required to approve a meeting schedule for the upcoming year. So, in front of you, we have the two thousand twenty-three, uh, meeting schedule for the village's boards, commissions, and committees. Um, it's a pretty typical schedule. As usual, we did make, um, one change for the upcoming year. Um, I'll note in July, our board meetings have been shifted to the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month, um, to better coincide with the July Fourth holiday and also to better, um, a lot less time between the July meetings and our one meeting that we have in August. Um, but other than that, the schedule is pretty routine as to, uh, past practice. And, um, if there are any questions, I can answer those for you. Otherwise, we'd just be looking for a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three meeting schedule.
Any comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Second it. Okay, we have a motion to second. Uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, anything else under village manager? No? Okay. Then, um, finance director, the FY twenty-two annual comprehensive financial report?
Good evening. Uh, tonight we have Ed Tracy from Selden Fox here to present the village's audited FY two thousand twenty-two financial statements.
Okay.
Um, this is Selden's second year as, serving as the, uh, auditors for the Village of Vernon Hills.
Well, thank you for having me here this evening. Um, thank you for having me have to follow Mr. Nadia. It's, it's very impressive.
Well, it is math, so.
That's true. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank Laura and Kevin and the rest of the staff for all the assistance they provided us during the audit. So, we, we come out in May and do some preliminary work, but we do the bulk of our work, uh, this year in September, uh, and early October. Um, when we're doing our audit, we're taking a look, uh, we try to design our audit to, to focus on those areas that are most significant and those areas which have the most risk from misstatement. Um, and we also take a look at your internal controls when we do our audit. Now, a financial statement audit doesn't give an opinion on internal control. That's not part of financial statement audit. But we do need to gain an understanding of those controls, walk through some transactions to see that they're operating as designed. And then we also did further testing on the internal controls, just to, uh, determine the extent we could rely on them when we design the rest of our audit procedures. So while we did, don't give an opinion on internal control, I can't say that our testing did not produce any, uh, exceptions, uh, that would, to, to the controls, um, that we found that they were operating effectively and we didn't have any kind of significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. Um, during the course of the audit, management provided us one adjusting journal entry to the original trial balance they provided us. We had one reclassification. Now, the audit report itself contains two sets of financial statements. There's what's called government-wide financial statements and fund financial statements. Now, fund financial statements are what you see on a regular basis. That's what the books are kept on, your general fund, your TIF funds, your golf course fund, that type of thing. Uh, government-wide financial statements takes kind of a, more of a long-term perspective and looks at things, um, as, as kind of on a combined basis. Uh, when you purchase equipment, it's put on the balance sheet and in the government-wide financial statements depreciated as opposed to just expensed. So, it, it, it accounts for long-term assets and long-term liabilities differently. So, we have to make adjustments to your books and records for those sets of financial statements. Um, so we're picking up long-term assets, long-term liabilities like debt, pension liabilities, um, compensated absences, things like that. But those, while we're making adjustments to those things, they primarily come from schedules provided by management or from reports provided by third parties like actuaries. Um, just, just a couple of highlights from the, the financial results for the year. Um, the general, in the general fund, which is obviously your main operating fund, revenues exceeded expenditures for the year by six-point three million. And after taking into account some transfers made to other funds, uh, you had an increase to your fund balance in the general fund of just under five-point-seven million. And your ending fund balance was at thirty-five million, which was approximately a hundred and twenty percent of your annual expenses. Um, revenues were up about five-point-seven million from the prior year. That was mainly due to a couple of things, increased sales taxes and home real sales taxes, food and beverage taxes, things that really got affected by COVID in the prior year, kind of returned more or less to normal levels. Um, so that, that accounted for the increases in, in revenues from the prior year. Um, expenses were also up about one-point-three million from the prior year. Um, the majority of that was kind of focused on a couple of areas. You have these, uh, sales tax reimbursements with some agreements, and so those were up, uh, as a result, again, they were kind of artificially down last year from COVID, and so they kind of came back. And, and there was also some increases in pension and insurance contributions during the year. Um, as far as the TIF funds were concerned, both saw increases in incremental tax revenues, which means that the, the equalized assessed value of those TIF, TIF areas increased, um, from, from the prior year. It is, you know, any increase over that base EAV is considered incremental taxes for the TIF funds, so they both saw increases. The Vernon Hills Town Center TAF increments were, I'm sorry, TIF increments were up about a hundred fifty thousand, and the Milwaukee Avenue Townline Road TIF increments were up about eight hundred thousand. Now, a third TIF was introduced this year to Hawthorne Mall TIF, but, uh, no increments, uh, were received prior to four-thirty-twenty-two. Uh, as far as the pensions are concerned, um, the IMRF fund reported a net pension asset at the end of the year of just over three million dollars and was a hundred and eight percent funded. So, you've actually had excess funds on hand at IMRF, which should result in some lower required employer contributions in the near future. Um, and the police pension fund, um, had a, was seventy-three percent funded at April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, which was down slightly from the prior year. Um, as far as the, there were some other letters that were included in smaller reports included with your packets. Um, again, uh, I mentioned earlier that we didn't have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in our internal control testing. So, we didn't really have anything to report in the management letters that relates to that. There were a few small items which we discussed, mostly about, um, upcoming accounting standards that will become effective in the near future and, and, um, potential to, uh, close the golf course fund into the general fund, since you no longer need to present it separately as an enterprise fund. Uh, there was a governance letter, uh, addressed to the board, which really, it's a kind of, it's kind of a boilerplate letter unless there's issues, um, where if we're not getting cooperation or we're getting, uh, disagreements in how to account for things, we bring those to your attention in that letter. Uh, we didn't have any of those, so like I said, it's, it was this, more or less a boilerplate language, uh, letter. And then there's, we also issued separate reports for the TIF funds, which get, uh, filed with the state as well, and they were included there. Um, so other, um, if there's any questions on any of the documents that, there, I know the audit report is a kind of a massive document, so I just tried to highlight a few things, um, but.
All several hundred pages of it, you mean?
Yeah. So, um, again, we appreciate all the cooperation we got during the audit. It was, uh, we appreciate working with Laura, Laura and her team, and so, um, again, if there's any questions, I'd.
So I noticed you commented on the, the one-point-three million. So, the sales tax was up, obviously. You know, you have price increases. And then the reimbursement deals were up because they're selling more, so their sales tax is up. What percentage of those, like, those reimbursement deals, what is, what is the breakdown of that? Did you know, like, is it a split tax or is it?
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, but it's, it's kind of like a percentage of, usually a percentage of, above a floor is added, or is it just a?
Yeah, I can answer that. We, we have two sales tax sharing agreements on the books right now. Um, our largest one is with, with CDW. Um, that's about fifty-six percent of the sales returned back to CDW. Um, the second one is with Hawthorne Mall, uh, which is part of our redevelopment agreement, which we're actually currently working on right now, um, as part of our amended RDA with the, with the change in phases of the development. Um, I, I don't remember the, the percentages off the top of my head for that one.
Thank you. And the food and beverage tax, you just rolled that into the sales tax then?
That, that's actually reported as a separate line, um, in the report, but it, it was up about four hundred fifty thousand from the prior year.
Do you recall the percentage on that by any chance?
Um, I might be able to pull that number. If I can find it really quick. That's the problem with the hundred-page report. Um, just a second, I'm almost there. There were, the food and beverage tax was about one point four, almost one-point-five million this year, and it's, like I said, it was up about four hundred fifty thousand from the prior year, so it was probably up.
I got it.
About thirty percent.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, you're not required to stay for the whole meeting. I, I thought I, as we've just gone through one of them.
If I had to guess, you could probably run the meeting. Next, next time.
Okay. Anybody else have a speaking part on staff? No? Okay. Then, next item would be the omnibus vote agenda. Um, is there a motion to approve items A through G? Motion to approve?
Sec.
Motion to second. Any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, uh, new business in communication, approval and passage of ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash one-three-zero, and ordinance granting a special use permit for an associated site plan approval for a children's recreation facility, Fun Flatables, to be located at one-twenty-two Hawthorne Center, Suite seven-oh-four.
Thank you. Um, Fun Flatables, uh, is contracted to lease a space, uh, near Macy's within the mall. Uh, the space was previously occupied by a recreational entertainment type of use. Uh, the Glow Golf, uh, vacated this unit. Uh, there was no, uh, valid existing special use permit for that unit, uh, so they were, Fun Flatables was required to go through a new special use, uh, process, uh, to, uh, to request a special use permit for this location. Uh, it is a business, uh, that offers, um, indoor inflatable. Uh, they do parties, they have open playtime. Uh, the planning commission did not, planning and zoning commission did not have any major concerns with this. Uh, there were two conditions in the recommendation to approve. Uh, one, to have the, uh, the, the plan for the space reviewed by the fire department to confirm egress requirements were met, and just a second one to confirm that the configuration of restrooms would comply with the plumbing code. Uh, but as I said, no, no major concerns coming out of planning and zoning. The reason this is here is a new business item is just due to the availability of the, the meetings at the end of the year here. In order to help the business out, uh, we had, uh, requested this be on new business. Uh, if there are concerns from, uh, from the board, we could bring it back, uh, with the, with a revised ordinance to address those concerns. But, uh, Deborah Dorsey from Fun Flatables is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Hi. Want to state your name for the record, please?
Deborah Dorsey Fazowski.
Okay. And you're the?
The owner.
Right, owner, okay. Uh, comments or questions from the board?
Is this part of a chain? Are you a franchisee or?
No, I have fourteen locations, um, but it's just me, so.
Really?
I have four in Indiana.
Illinois or?
And four in Indiana and ten in Illinois.
Wonderful.
Well, this'll be my tenth one, so thirteen, almost fourteen.
And where do you, where do you live?
I live in Indiana. We don't have that many malls. We're, we're primarily in malls. In Illinois, we're in malls. In Indiana, I have a couple strip malls and one indoor mall. But they're pretty, bring a lot of kids, a lot of kids. We do field trips, we do open play, a lot of kids, like, we have the climbers, we also have the inflatables, and we have some arcades, some concession, but big on birthday parties and field trips at the schools.
I'm just curious, how did you get started with this?
I got started with this, um, very oddly. Uh, I was a legal secretary and I, when I had my children, it was a firm that went overnight and I, we would go and work a late, later shift as moms. We would work two or three days a week and we were on the computer and I was looking for, it was downtime, there were no jobs, and I was looking for an outdoor swing set and these inflatables, like you would see at a carnival. Now, this was seven, seventeen years ago. And they just kept popping up, saying, "Start your own business, start your own business." And I had no intention of ever starting my own business, but I did have babies at the time and I was thinking, "Oh, I, I think I can do this," but that was for an outdoor rental. And I did, and I, before you know it, I ordered six inflatables and a truck and got, started, you know, a name and got a, a U-Haul, or a, a trailer for them and hired drivers. And before you know it, I was running a big outdoor business, rental business, and for three years I was saying, "This has to be better. This can be indoors, year-round, climate-controlled." And everybody was against me. "You'll never make it work, never make it work. You, too much electricity, too much space you'll need." And how were we, we configure it to rotate parties and stuff? I proved them, I made it work. I just figured it would, and I started with my first one and it worked. And then I had a, a child with a disability, um, my son has Down Syndrome, and he gave me just a whole new world of, so I started kind of opening these and designing them for also special needs children, putting certain things in the facilities and making a more o, open concept. And then he was just my drive to kind of grow it. And that's how I started doing two, three, and four, and I never sought out, never thought I would do two, three, and four, but then my life changed and I decided this needs to be a little bigger.
Well done.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Because it, um, you know, they went through the commission without really any other than those couple conditions. Yeah, okay.
I think this is obviously a great addition of the mall, but it's also the backstory that is just so great for our town.
Yeah.
So, great job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, then is there a motion to approve?
Do we have any other facilities like this currently? I know there have been some in the past.
Pump it up.
Yeah, Pump It Up was there.
That's gone for a long time, but that was, place was rocking.
Yeah, it was busy.
They had like three birthday parties.
No, this is big business. I have a friend in Massachusetts, he started like ten, he had like a hundred, a whole warehouse full all around, like in the New England corridor.
Wow.
He sold it, but, yeah. He sold it, but yeah, the inflatable business is actually-
It's evolved. I mean, the what they do with inflatables now is unbelievable.
Okay, in that case, there a motion to approve? Motion to approve. Actually, what we're doing is motion to-
Yeah, what, since it's new business?
In this case, it is a motion to approve his ordinance 2022-130. It's as drafted in-
That's what I-
Uh, in your packet.
So motion to approve 2022-130. So we have a motion and a second. If there are no other kinds of questions, then roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Welcome to town.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anything else on the regular meeting? No?
Nothing else for the Vos Board.
Okay, and we're having closed session, but we can do that motion at the end of-
Committee hold.
At the end of committee, right, okay. All right, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
I'll second it. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, guys have it, we are adjourned. Can we take?
Okay, we'll call to order the December 13th-
A little break. What's that? To you.
All right. We'll call to order the December 13th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Markwart? Trustee Takaoaka?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Schenk?
Uh, here.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
President Byrne and Trustee Forster both gave notice that they would not be in attendance.
Is there a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem for this evening's committee meeting?
I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be the chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second that.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Okay, first item of business is the approval of the Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes from November 15th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoaka?
Epstein.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Second item is Royal Burke Dale, concept discussion of request to amend the Royal Burke Dale development permit to permit solar roof tiles?
Thank you. The Royal Burke Dale development permit, similar to several of the other pods within Greg's Landing, has a requirement that roof material will be limited to cedar shake roofs, slate, or tile. We've received a request to consider an amendment to the development permit that would expand the list of permitted roof materials to include solar tile product. I have a image of it. So here's a representative home from within Royal Burke Dale. The request would allow a new, a newer product, which you see here, which is a solar roof tile that has a slate-like appearance. The Master Association, in response to our request for an opinion on this, referred to the, the state's Homeowner Solar Rights Act, which restricts an HOA from prohibiting a solar material. So the, the Master Association essentially has no opinion. They would defer to the village if the village wishes to consider an amendment like this. It could be approved by the village without any additional action from the homeowner association. Since the pod does not have a formal association itself, we did request a petition or some sort of representation from other owners within the area. We did receive signatures from a pretty good number of, of homeowners in Royal Burke Dale. With that, should the, the Committee of the Whole Direct Staff to do so, we could begin a preparation of a formal amendment, working with the village attorney on the appropriate process for that. And that all said, Rinny Serenian from the Royal Burke Dale Pod is here and happy to answer any questions. It was her initiative in the community to, to bring this request to us.
Yeah, and looking at that picture, it is amazing, the innovation that they keep coming to. I mean, that compared to what original solar panels look like, this just looks like a roof.
Right.
Do we know who the maker of this particular one is?
Tesla.
It is Tesla. And you are?
You're Rinny Serenian, a Royal Burke Dale homeowner.
I don't see why not.
I don't, I mean, it's- I'd love to see a sample of this. Well, two things. I mean, it's, it's the way the future's going, and it's a good thing. And, and the other part of it is, basically under the, with that new Solar Energy Act, and that, even if we wanted to say we couldn't, we couldn't prevent it, I believe, yes.
Can we, can we talk about that for a second? Excuse me, so. Yeah. So Village Manager Timoney was telling me earlier that if, if there was an association that already had a restriction, and it was grandfathered in, is that correct? But, so we would be relieving them of that?
That's my understanding, that they could prohibit this based on aesthetics, given they've done it in the past. It predated the laws regarding solar panels. I, that's my understanding of the law. I have to confirm that, but that's-
And then do we know what other communities, HOAs in, in Verdun Hills have similar restrictions? Would we be opening, not that I'm necessarily going to vote in favor or against, but would be, we'd be setting a precedent then to allow for this to be available in all communities, I would imagine?
Yeah. I would say that if you allow it in one, probably a little, not a good reason to-
To not allow it elsewhere.
Yeah, wouldn't they, you sometimes do it on an individual basis of, of a home? Because it's, I don't know, but that, it is difficult because-
We don't want to get in, we're, we're not talking at the individual level. We're talking about modifying the rules-
A development permit, a development permit that governs all of-
All of them, yeah, not on an individual basis. So my point is, if, if we're allowing this development, then we're in effect allowing it throughout all the communities.
Absolutely. Here's the thing, the cost of doing these things, I mean, if someone wants to do it, I mean, obviously the benefit, energy-wise, but the cost to do these roofs is not like a standard roof, right?
Correct, it's a premium.
Yeah, it's excessive. So you gotta give, you know, someone has the right, you know, to invest that kind of roof on their home. I don't see a problem with it. Because here's the thing, you're, you're, I don't think you're going to have a problem like you're saying, even across developments because of the cost to do this. It's cost prohibitive for every person to do this on their home, so.
No, I get that. I just, I just want to make it clear that-
Oh, sure.
That, that-
Absolutely.
That there, even though it's, we can't prohibit it for new developments, for ones that already have this prohibition, we'd be relieving-
Right, but there'd be no reason to prohibit it in the first place. It's kind of-
Which was fine.
For the cost to actually do them.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, no.
There's different, in fact, actually, there's an outfit for solar panels that do not go on a roof, that go into the yard that actually, I believe, I believe it's called sunflower. And-
You got those big panels, yeah, I've seen those on farms.
Circular.
So that's a different-
It's roughly about $40,000.
That's a different discussion, but yes.
But I'm just saying, it's, I don't know.
So we're not-
So currently, if somebody wanted to put solar panels on a cedar shake roof in Royal Burke Dale, there's no, it's just regular permitting processes right now, there's no restrictions on that? If they have one of the approved materials that they have now, is that correct? Or does, do you even those, do even those need-
That would be even tougher.
No, no, that's, if you have cedar shaker roof, and, but you put the solar panels on top of the cedar shake, like you see on roofs now.
To what?
No, you couldn't do that, could you?
Would you be, are you able to do that now?
What's our current ordinance for that?
I don't believe we would interpret that as being permitted. As it's written right now, we've, we've restricted it specifically to the materials that are listed.
So if somebody wanted to add solar panels on their cedar shake roof in Royal Burke Dale, they would not be able to do that, is that correct?
That would be my interpretation, as it's written.
Versus like an asphalt-type roof?
No, well, we're talking two different things.
Yeah, like, when they come in and they put them on a current roof, they, they put them on like little supports, and they act-
Probably a two-by-four.
They don't tear up your roof, they put it over your roof, and then they seal it in. Exactly, you know what I'm talking about. That's pretty much what's most what you see right now. So they can't even do that right now, and even if we approve this ordinance, they still wouldn't be able to do that unless they use this type of material, is that correct?
What?
We, we could write it as directed, or as requested by the community, I should say. To, to date, this is what has been requested. I would interpret the existing development permit as, as preventing the installation of what you consider to be a typical solar panel roof installation.
Well, that, well, those are two different things. That solar, adding solar panels to a current, to an existing roof versus replacing your roof tiles with solar tiles is what they're asking for here. But currently, is there any, currently, is there a restriction throughout the community for adding solar panels to, to homes?
I'm not aware of one that has it, and I would, I would interpret it as it is cover, it would cover the cedar shake, it would undo the appearance restriction.
Regardless of cedar shake, I'm saying throughout the community, if you have a regular tile, just a regular roof, is there a restriction right now on adding those solar panels?
Are you, are you asking about Royal Burke Dale?
No, I'm not. I'm just asking about the whole community, in general.
I've got neighbors who have it.
The village does allow it, the development permit of this pod does not.
This pod doesn't? And so it's on a pod-by-pod basis, or neighborhood basis, whether or not solar panels?
Because of development agreements, yeah, yeah.
Because of the development permit specific to, most of the pods would, would have some type of restriction. Actually, I shouldn't say most, about half of them have some type of restriction.
Like in Deer Path, is there a restriction to add solar panels to homes in Deer Path? Okay.
Do you want to add?
About the custom homes in Greg's, Riviera Estates.
Right. I just wanted to understand the general concept of solar panels, first of all, and before, okay. But now, changing out your roof completely to solar tiles is what we're talking about today, and this certainly looks, at least in the rendering, it looks very good to me.
Looks like a slate roof.
Looks like a slate roof, it looks good.
And if someone put a slate roof on their house, I believe, here that they wouldn't reject it.
Do you know?
So.
Do you know when, when Tesla finally made these, or their, or their offshoot company made these available? Because I know they were having trouble originally with, with this product.
My understanding is they were made available in 2017.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Hi. Is it, are you, are you here because you're driven by a group of your neighbors wanting this, or is this something that you're seeking out for your home, or?
So I wasn't sworn in, but to be honest, okay, it's for me, but when every neighbor I approached encouraged me to speak to you before today, and thanked me, and, and they seemed interested without me prodding, just, it was not hard to get signatures. I could probably get more, everybody signed easily.
How many, how, homes in Royal Burke Dale? Any idea?
Um, I don't know. I was told to go within a 250 radius. There's a Palmer Circle also, and I was supposed to ask those. I'm not sure, 20, maybe, 20?
Not that much.
I think it's smaller than Lake Charles.
Okay.
If you know that.
Oh, I, is that Riviera Estates, right, Lake Charles?
Yes, yes, Riviera, yeah. It's, it's a little bit smaller than them.
Andrew, do you know what the count of homes are?
I, I believe it is under 30, something in the 28, 29 range seems to be my recollection.
For perspective, for a 2,000 square foot home, these roofs cost $55,000.
Exactly.
$55,000.
Not anyone's going to be running around doing this.
No.
No, as I just did, I was taking a look at this device that is a sunflower, and it's 40, 40,000, just under $40,000. And I guess you get roughly, government-wise, a 30% off, or receiving government for solar.
Well, I just, I'm, I'm curious about if someone doesn't want to spend that, but still wants to have solar panels on their current roof. Those 20-plus homes are, can't have it. As, even if this passes tonight, they still can't get the solar panels on the roof. Is that pretty much what I understand? I mean, is it, is that something we can clear up tonight, or that has to go in front of Royal Burke Dale, just to allow them to have it?
It is not a question I have put to the community. This, the request that came to us was specific to this type of installation, as I understand it, that this was what the limit of the request was.
Okay.
I would imagine they wouldn't want that. I don't necessarily want to speak for you, but-
But they wouldn't want what?
Wouldn't want to add the solar panels instead of replacing the entire roof, adding those solar panels.
I can tell you what some of the neighbors I spoke to said, if that's, if you're interested.
I'd like to hear that.
Yes. One of them, because they had looked into it, this, he said, "I, I thought you couldn't do it. Somebody at Costco told me you're not allowed to do it." Another woman told me that, she said, "I didn't know we were supposed, we had to get approval to do this." So those were sort of the-
There's a lot of uncertainties out there.
That, so I didn't know either until I started.
It's a new era, so.
Like, I'm looking at Google, and you're near Turtle Bay, right? Kind of across the street?
Turtle, I don't-
Turtle Bay Road. It's on the other side of Greg's, right near-
Not Turtle Bay, no, I think I'm a little way-
Oh, not you, but there's a Turtle Bay Road.
Yes, sorry.
They have, there's a house there that you can clearly see on Google that has solar panels over their current roof. So they're, you know, a stone's throw away. So if it ever comes up where they want to request that-
That's what I said, homeowners do it.
Yeah, I guess we'll just, we'll just leave it.
Just leave it.
Leave it for now.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So what do we need a-
I'm in favor of, of this-
Okay.
Product being an option for members.
So what you're looking for is a motion to have you-
Motion to, to proceed with putting together the formal process to prepare the amendment. We'd be working with the village attorney to just ensure that the, that we initiate the correct process, but the direction would just be generally to, to prepare the formal process for adoption.
Okay.
Do we need, would we need to have residents from the other, like Riviera Estates and the other ones come forward, or should we, for this similar product for them, or should?
If they want to, I mean, they'll apply for-
Yeah, would have to be a separate, because this is a-
I mean, would it have to be a separate thing, or could we just?
Or you want to do a blanket ordinance that you can use these tiles in all of Verdun Hills?
Yeah, because this is for the Royal Burke Dale specific, so.
The other development permits for the other pods wouldn't be impacted by this ordinance.
Right.
Right.
But to the extent they're all pretty similar, I think it might make some sense to introduce changes.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, it's the, because it came from the same declarations originally, so if we, if we-
Just make it all of Verdun Hills?
If we could, well, not necessarily all of Verdun Hills, but all of Greg's Landing.
The custom.
The custom homes of Greg's Landing, instead of the one-
Bring it to the knowledge, though, too, that-
Why, maybe someone in Centennial wants to do it. I mean, it's not just the custom homes, anybody can do it.
Well, anybody can do it now, that's not in Royal Burke Dale.
Okay.
I'm assuming.
Oh, really? Your association will allow it?
They all have, Riviera Estates cannot do it.
Right. Everyone's got their own HOA.
The custom pods that require cedar shake roofs cannot do it.
Do you know where each one's at?
Because, because other neighborhoods in town would, do not have a requirement on
The roof tiles, right.
Make it a blanket. Make it, we would permit it, I mean-
Would it be appropriate to make it a, a blanket for the whole community, or make it a blanket for the Greg's Landing HOA?
Probably start with the Greg's Landing pods, because that's, that, those are the ones that require the, you know, the cedar shake roofs. But I, I think we have some work to do, Andrew and I, read, to research what the other development permits state, get some basic direction.
Maybe report back to over the next month or so.
Right, so let's just do that.
We can tell you what's out there, how different, because I think the development permits are pretty similar.
Right.
For all the custom pods. If you remember when we dealt with the appearance review issues?
Right.
We, we amended the development permit that, that addressed the remaining vacant lots in Riviera Estates in Royal Burke Dale. So it was a comprehensive approach.
Well, that's why I was suggesting perhaps that we, instead of just saying this is for Royal Burke Dale, do it for the other ones, at least within the Greg's Landing north area.
Yeah, tonight's a very informal direction, and the direction could be for us, yes, let's move forward, and yes, let's look, look into addressing all the various custom pods in Greg's Landing.
Sounds great.
So we can approve Royal Burke?
No, we're-
A motion.
Yeah.
So you don't need a motion?
We don't even need a motion.
Consensus.
Just a consensus, yes, move forwards.
So.
So, Trustee Shank, you want to have staff move forward with it?
A hundred percent.
Trustee Taco.
Yes, absolutely.
Trustee Markford?
Sure.
Okay, so, just go ahead and move forward with it. Okay? All right. A five-year capital improvement plan?
Thank you very much, consistent with past years, I've shared the five-year capital improvement program. Our emphasis tonight is on the first, the proposed next year budget. We're well underway in the budget process, working with the finance department and the manager's office. A lot of information has been input, but at this point in time, the manager's office hasn't had a chance to review what's really proposed in the operating budget. So we're really talking about a high level. I'm going to go through this list in a swift pace, interrupt me, ask questions as you see fit. Generally, at a high level in terms of where the money is coming from, and I'm not going to use Kandarp's math here, it's going to be, again, at a high level. The MFT is approximately three-fifths of the the proposed budget. The general fund represents a third, and then we have the VHTC TIF, that's the the remaining percentage. But I did share the five-year plan, both digitally and in paper form, so let's get started. The road rehab program, 365,000. Manager Timoney and I have had some discussions back and forth. It has been the plan that we move forward with our larger project at Lakeview. We've had some discussions, and there might be some available funding for us addressing the parking lots. Should the money work out in terms of some of the proposed budget and Kevin's review, we will know more. But at this point in time, if we move forward, it would be for a parking lot improvement, not for local streets. And what we're talking about is the V-hack southerly roadway that is owned by the village and our two parking lots. The high school is talking about doing their roadway, which is the northerly roadway, the one across from the Arbor Theater. So we would be doing that, not in concert, but the same year as them. The other parking lot we're talking about is the Muni parking lot, that has not been resurfaced for 25 years, so it, it, it warrants that. We need to spend some time whether or not we have enough money in the MFT fund, and whether or not we can supplement that if needed from the general fund. So just general overview for you. In terms of the entry monument, $65,000 is proposed. We did not move forward in the current year's budget, working with Andrew in terms of one of the proposed developments for the the tire business. And potentially having their plant with a easement to allow for a sign. I'm not sure if there's really a good location along that corridor outside of I-Dot's right-of-way to put a sign. So if one goes in, my opinion is, instead of in front of the pond, we may want to consider putting it closer to Libertyville in front of the the bank instead, where the current sign, wood sign is. So we'll provide more information, but that's a high-level view of that. The, the next item, $300,000, is for the proposed park at the southerly half-day TIF area. And that's just earmarked, we need to really figure out in terms of the actual cost of it. My staff has put together three different sketches for consideration, but those were just finalized, we'll share those concepts with the, with the board at a later date. Preventive maintenance program, very consistent with items that have been presented in past budgets. The increases or modifications would be, the price of asphalt has, has went up, as a lot of things have in the last year or two years. Proposed increase of $30,000 for asphalt. We share with Lincolnshire, the Port Clinton Road Bridge. There's been studies on the bridge and how we should spend our money. We do need to patch the concrete and seal it to keep the life of the the bridge in, in good shape. Our share would be 50,000, they would build Lincolnshire 50,000 for that work, so that's that line item. Annual sidewalk and curb program, proposed $20,000 increase for that, again, inflation is why we're asking for that. You're, we are all familiar with the Lakeview Fairway Route 60 project, I guess right now it is a Lakeview 60 project. And Phase III engineering funds and also the construction funds are included in the proposed budget. Street lighting on page two, street lighting, LED fixtures, as part of the Lakeview project, we're improving some of the lighting along that project. And so we're looking to make improvements outside of the limits of that project, still within Continental Executive Park, to improve the lighting system adjacent to that project. So 50,000 is earmarked for that. Open space stormwater improvements, local drainage improvements. Previously, the five-year plan included $100,000 for each year. We're doing more of that in-house, so instead of bidding that out and paying a contractor to do that, Public Works staff has been doing the improvements instead. So 75,000 for that. Lake Charles Deco grant match, so funding through DECO is in the three-and-a-half million dollar range. And our match is 250,000, the park district is contributing around 150,000. We have a kickoff meeting on Friday, and we're going to start moving forward with putting plans together, getting them ready to bid. And that 250,000 is for our match. What are we doing at Lake Charles, there's a delta forming at the north end of Lake Charles, we want to address that. Sediment loading upstream, we want also to address that. Let's see, Centennial Crossing Pond, so at Fairway and Route 45, that pond was deeded to the village as part of the extension of Fairway Drive going through the the V-hack site. The pond retaining wall is failing, you can see it's starting to tip into the, into the water, so we do need money to repair that. The Muni golf course, we've been in discussions with Kemper, Kemper is finalizing their budget. This is really based on last year's budget, so 30,000 towards some asphalt repairs and seal coating some of the the pathways also. The Real Master, they might have already purchased that, I do need to verify that with them. And one item that's not on the list that needs to be, I learned today from Kevin Lind, is a reminder that we did have discussions earlier about purchasing of golf carts. Thirty golf carts, I don't remember the exact dollar amount, but I think that's in the 140,000 range. So we need to add that to the proposed program. Page three, so page three, some of the improvements that are needed over by the comp center in the police building. The police department is looking at some advanced planning dollars of 25,000 to have a discussion for designs of what might be, once that building moves forward with some changes. The lobby is very small, it's very difficult for people to be in that area, and especially if you have two people that have some potential conflict. The police building in terms of the cell area, the counters, the cabinets, the sink, that area was not touched as part of the police remodeling, it was deferred. And we're supportive of moving forward with that, that project. Couple of final items, Public Works Building, the only request from Public Works this year is, we do need to paint and stain the exterior. It was last done in 2014, so there's 20,000 proposed for that. And flipping to the last page, IT equipment, the, a lot of the discussions and more technical details are being worked out with our IT team. And what's proposed is the sand redundancy expansion, 180,000, and then a village-wide CCTV upgrade, 125,000. The grand total is a little over 4.9 million, and then we do need to add in the the golf carts in addition to that. So that's my quick overview and wanted to present that to the board. Again, this is very high level, we understand that it's important to look at all of our operating budget, look at the full expenses from the village. So we will be back in front of the board through the normal budget process and updating the board on all the details.
Dave, I was just looking at a couple, like, public V-hack in a couple of years, a new maintenance building, storage facility, is that in addition, page three?
Yes, very good question, what, what Kevin and I were discussing is with, with my leaving the village, I wanted to put forward some of the things where I, that were ideas previously, to make sure that no one forgets about them. So in terms of those items, they've never made it onto a five-year plan, so these are more for budgeting purposes. If there's specifics, as far as the new restrooms and shelter, Hesner has put together a plan, they presented it previously to manager Fleischauer and myself. And ultimately, the price tag of, you know, 2.65 million is why it never moved forward. What we have in the, for storage right now is we have a number of storage boxes, and as people need it, we've added another, and we've added another. If we move forward with storage, we would make sure that similar volume of those storage containers are included in that design. We do have a design, and then for our needs, it was a little bit bigger.
I've always wondered, like, why they didn't, you know, the concessions area, where it is now, they, why they don't have a, would be an additional concessions near the fields, closer to the fields, because we, you know.
I believe, in fact, if I'm going back, is one of the things that was brought up is a bathroom.
Yeah.
Sewer and water, I guess it's questionable, I think we've actually had, and this is out by, I'll say, is it field eight, seven and eight? So you're moving out to the softball field where the girls play. A lot of sports areas there, that was a point of putting a bathroom and a, a facility, a cover for protection. And I think wasn't it a fact of sewer and water was one of the factors. I know even, even with the two brothers came and gave a presentation in regards to something similar, and one was looking at something also as a solar facility with a bathroom. But I believe one of the big expenses is bringing in sewer and water, if I'm correct.
Yeah, a lot of different options as far as considerations there, trustee Markord is correct. If you go from the concession building, the sanitary sewer goes under the turf fields towards corporate woods, there's no other sanitary in that area, so we'd have to connect to that pipe and go towards Fairway Drive. So that's why we really don't have anything further to the, to the west. There has been other concepts in terms of where the concession and the bathroom building is of, for shelter and shade, of connecting those two buildings with some sort of shade structure, too. You could probably do that more reasonably in terms of pricing. Ultimately, this is more for the storage part of the equation.
I don't know, like, if you can build a structure that you have to accommodate the storage needs and future needs, and add a bathrooms or a concession close to the fields, one through four, you know, like the Cloverleaf fields out there, just, you know, you, you, there's just a lot of people. And I, especially with the bathrooms, you just see a lot of grandparents making that walk, you know, and it's just hard for them.
Yeah, correct, and I think, too, with, how many containers do we have out at V-hack?
Probably two per field.
I think there's five.
Five of, okay, I thought four or five, you know, and sometimes, too, now, of cost-wise, of, it won't be a bathroom but a shelter, you could actually literally now, they're taking containers and making them to homes. But you're seeing containers putting a roof area on it, and you can beautify a container and put a roof on it for, it's still going to cost, but I think for, for price-wise, we're not. Technically, yes, yep.
Too modular, why don't we do a V-hack refresh, and we build, instead of doing brick and mortar, we do modular? I actually know, I, I know a big modular builder in India, and he, they, they build stuff for medical, but you could have the exterior match any facade you want. A lot of hospitals do it, where they butt it up against hospitals, match the facade, roof, everything, you wouldn't even know. And it's a lot more cost-effective than building in brick and mortar, about half. What do you think of that?
Who are you asking?
I'm asking them, the subject matter expertise, I'm not looking for an opinion, I'm asking the subject matter expertise. Dave, like a modular, would, would a modular type of thing work?
I, I, I think it would work in terms of storing of materials, I think there's a, my, my opinion is, there's a general aesthetic that we're trying to match, and I think that's one of the things that we're looking to do.
The exteriors, I'm telling you, you wouldn't even be able to tell the difference.
I think the general direction of what I'm hearing is.
V-hack refresh?
Is.
Call it that.
I think the general direction, what I'm hearing is what we need to do is, Hesner has prepared a couple of different designs, we have those, I'll work with manager Timoney.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll refresh those documents and share them with the board, so I think it will help us lead through the budget process in terms of some of the concepts.
Also, am I, am I correct, we were talking the V-hack, but we, we spend roughly over 250,000 on the, on the normal maintenance and factors into V-hack. In fact, I think it's more like 260,000 is spent each year on V-hack, just alone on that.
Upkeep?
Um, yep. So, but it's one hell of a beautiful facility.
Yeah.
It's used a lot. I didn't expect a lot of questions, because this is at a very high level, but.
So like on stuff like, you know, at the police department, doing like sinks, counters and painting, like, who does that? What kind of contractors do you hire, do you hire big commercial guys, or do you hire like?
Typically, you would hire, this project requires a little bit of work from many different specialties. And so it's, you're really going to find a general contractor that's maybe actually a little bit smaller to do this type of job.
I mean, you're not using like a Walsh or some like shade, you're not using guys like that, are we?
No, I, I think the Walshes are too big, I, I think there's some more local ones that we would be able to have bid on this. I know also, we have done projects like our conference room expansion here, where we've went with an architect designing it, and then they have services too, to construct it. And that may make sense, too, for smaller projects like this.
Yeah, I didn't think they'd use big. Yeah, they're charging way too much, even these medium-sized guys, I've seen it in the medical field, it's ridiculous.
We would competitively bid.
Yeah, no, I was just curious, yeah, I figured.
Can I ask about the, the monument in front of Menards?
Please.
So Director Jennings, I know we had a discussion a couple months ago or so, a few months ago, about the fountain. And, and also right-of-way, you were asking about that, is there any, any update regarding the fountain and who, who would be paying for that?
So the, yes, there's an update, the petitioner for the belt tire development understands that, as it's written right now, they are responsible for that pond area. The, you haven't seen the, the planning and zoning commission report on this yet, but they did note, they acknowledged it. They're going to look into whether or not it's possible that somebody else might take over the responsibility of it, but as it's written right now, they are responsible for it. They were a little bit surprised to hear that, so we did discuss, we keep, we're keeping both options open, as Director Brown had said, we've got an existing sign. As Director Brown had said, we've got an existing sign. It does not have a formal easement. We would hope that we'd be able to get a, a formal easement agreement in order to replace that sign, but the Bell Tire folks were 100% open to us having an easement on their property. It is south of the, the shared border with Libertyville, so we'd, we'd like to keep it further north if we can, but we, at this time, both options are on the table.
I guess I, I can go either way with that, if, I don't know, if, if the border sign is always right on the border, like, when you're crossing into Indiana, it's like, right, right on the line, or if, you know, if it's 100 feet south or whatever. So, but, but you'd mentioned in terms of the easement, that would come from the state, where the sign is currently?
Yeah, so, options of where to put it, we know that the state is not going to allow us to put it within the right-of-way, so that really limits the options in terms of when you're going southbound to, to view it. In front of the pond is certainly, would be under the ownership of Bell Tire, and so the two of us have been working with the developer on making sure there's a sign easement included on the plat. My opinion, as you're driving in, in front of the bank, might be the best location for it in terms of visibility, and you're starting to get into a situation where you're multiple lanes, and then you have a right turn lane onto Greg's, so pushing it further towards the north might have some benefit from there, but those are some of the options we're looking at. In terms of the pond, we have worked with them in terms of the engineering plans, and we're anticipating that there will be two fountains in, in the pond as part of the approval.
Thank you for that. So, back to the location of the sign, your, your preference, when you say in front of the bank, you mean, like, where the old bank location was, where, where the sign is currently, or moving it south to directly in front of where Chase is currently?
In, somewhere in front of Chase Bank's ownership, somewhere within that stretch, so very close to where the sign is currently. But there's still a lot of time to work through it. We, we would love to hear feedback of what other people are thinking in terms of ideal location. That's just merely one's opinion mine, so...
Okay. Is possibly even, even sort of on the south side of that entrance way into where Chase and Menards is? It's a possibility, although that's kind of a, that's a write-out for those people. So, I don't know if cars would be blocking the visibility of that versus...
Exactly. It's a very difficult intersection if you're ever trying to cross it, or certainly...
Certainly, crossing is impossible, yeah.
Yeah. So, when you're trying to go north and you're looking, we certainly don't want the sign to be blocking anyone's...
To be blocking anyone, yeah. That certainly is hard enough as it is, for sure. I agree with you there. All right, so...
Anything else on the five-year plan? Your last five-year plan, right?
Wow.
Thank you for your feedback. I appreciate it.
He's hired a consultant.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah, I believe so.
And then, going to closed session?
We, we need a motion to adjourn to go to closed session?
Yes, for personnel and approval of minutes.
Okay.
So, made.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second, to adjourn committee of the whole and go to closed session for discussion of personnel? That was just it, right? Just personnel?
And, and approval of minutes.
And approval of minutes, okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Shank.
Aye.
Trustee Parker.
Aye.
Trustee Appenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takoka.
Aye.
Chairman Tocumbe.
Aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned, and we will not be conducting any business when we're done.
Into closed session.
We're in Bath, we're in Bath.
Huh?
Dave Brown, Bath.
Yeah, Dave Brown.
We, what, what do you mean?